Good afternoon, welcome to the afternoon session of the committee meetings for April 18th. Our first committee is Committee of the Whole and our first presentation will be a briefing on the transportation issues in the Cordada PUD. And I'm going to, this is for information only, and I'm going to turn this over to Alan Mariner from our legal department.
Thank you. Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney. As Ms. Vargas said, we're going to brief counsel this afternoon on transportation issues related to the Cordada PUD that also relate to a development agreement that you're going to consider this evening at a public hearing regarding the E8/E9 preliminary plat. So this is giving you some background prior to the public hearing this evening. We're not going to deal with the development agreement that you're considering this evening, just some of the important transportation issues. And there are two actually issues that I want to talk about. One are building moratoriums that are imposed by the PUD. And secondly, the east-west connector for the PUD. Ted's here to talk about the east-west connector, the transportation issues, answer any questions. Rick is also here to answer any planning questions that might come up regarding the moratorium. Also Kathy Bell is our expert on the Cordada PUD. A little bit of history, the other thing I want to say is we previously briefed counsel last June in executive session. We felt it was a long enough period of time and the issues were complex enough that we should come back and do a quick briefing again before the public hearing. We also have one new council member since then. Brief history of the Cordada PUD. The city inherited the PUD. PUD is Plan Unit Development. We inherited it from Watcom County through two annexations. So we didn't get it all at once, we got it in two separate annexations. And over the years, I've been here 11 years and Kathy's been here longer, we've struggled with interpreting and enforcing the rules of the PUD which are incorporated into our municipal code. So it's been a real struggle for us over the course of time. These rules require, the most significant issues with regards to these rules involve transportation improvements. And normally, the city requires the developer to make necessary transportation improvements prior to or concurrent with their development. Unfortunately, a lot of the PUD is not set up that way. In fact, it's just the opposite. It allows development to occur until it reaches a certain threshold and then a moratorium is imposed until a traffic study is done and the improvements called for in the traffic study are made. The problem with that is imposing these periodic moratoriums is that the developer, Trillium, the original developer of the PUD, is no longer involved in the PUD to any significant extent and is no longer available to make the necessary transportation improvements. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the moratoriums. The PUD provides for three moratoriums. The first we imposed, the city imposed back in 2006, and that was when development in the PUD reached 3 and 1/4 million square feet. And so that number is in the PUD document and says, "When you reach that level, you got to stop, do a traffic study, and get a financial contribution from the developer towards the necessary traffic improvements." And we lifted that moratorium in early 2007 after Trillium did the necessary traffic study and made a financial contribution to the city of just a little less than $1 million. So the second moratorium is scheduled to occur in the northern part of the PUD which includes the location of the E8/E9 preliminary plat, when daily trips from that area reach an average of 7,400 trips. And that moratorium requires a specific traffic study to identify necessary street improvements and again, a financial contribution from the developer towards those identified improvements. We are very close to reaching that 7,400 daily car trips from the northern part of the PUD. So we're on the verge of a moratorium. The third moratorium, staff has had discussion about, because there's a third moratorium out there, but we do not believe that there is sufficient capacity left in the PUD to ever reach the development thresholds that would trigger the third moratorium. So we need to deal with the second moratorium. And I want to be really clear that the development agreement that you'll be considering at the public hearing this evening deals with a number of transportation issues in the PUD and one of them is providing an alternative to imposing the moratorium. Okay? The second issue that I want to talk about is the east-west connector that's required by the Cordada PUD. I gave everybody a handout, all council handout, and I'm showing the same thing up here. So the PUD requires construction of an east-west connector between Cordada Parkway, you can see on your map, and the Guide Meridian over here, prior to reaching that 7,400 car trips. And then it requires building the rest of the east-west connector between Cordada Parkway and Northwest Drive prior to imposing the third moratorium or reaching that threshold. Back in 2008, when the hearing examiner approved, and you can see in red, in red is the E8/E9 subdivision, which will be the topic of the development agreement with the owners, will be the topic of that public hearing this evening. But back when, the hearing examiner, back in 2008, when she approved the preliminary plat, the E8/E9 preliminary plat, at that time, city staff believed that Klein Road, which is, you can see Klein Road, would be the east-west connector from Northwest Drive over to the Guide Meridian. Since then, a lot of time has gone by, we've had discussions with developers in the area and other analysis and have come to the conclusion that the east-west connector should actually be Horton Road. And you can see the portion of Horton Road from the guide that is currently built and then the unbuilt in hatch marks, the unbuilt portion of Horton Road going all the way to Northwest Drive. So the, I'm going to turn it over in a second to Ted to explain why we've come to that conclusion that the east-west connector should not be Klein but should be Horton Road. And I want to point out that the development agreement will identify, does specifically identify Horton Road as the east-west connector for the Cordada PUD and provides for a significant financial contribution by the owner of the E8/E9 preliminary plat to the construction of the uncompleted portion of Horton Road. So with that, that's sort of the background I think will be helpful at the public hearing this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ted just to explain the issues around the east-west connector and how we've identified Horton Road. And then if there are any questions about the moratoriums, Rick and Kathy are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. The east-west connector that Alan spoke of, the PUD documents talk about the connector being in the vicinity of Klein, making the connection from the Guide Meridian to Northwest. So as we looked at this a little bit more, there's been quite a bit of environmental work that's been done in this north part of town. I think you're all aware that it's very wet out there. There's a lot of environmental constraints in the area. The Klein Road alignment is very, very wet. It doesn't actually show up on this map, but the section between the east boundary of the E8/E9 plat and the Guide Meridian is one of the wettest sections. So that's a factor in when we consider, should we build Klein? There's also a little bit of right-of-way lacking in that same area, about 30 feet of right-of-way we would need to, or the developer, someone would need to acquire additional right-of-way. So we have some environmental constraints in the eastern boundary as well as right-of-way issues. The entire alignment is very wet and it's a pretty long connection. You can see due to the alignment of Northwest Drive, the further north you go, the longer the connection between Northwest and the Guide Meridian, so that's certainly a factor. When you take all of that into consideration, the cost to construct Klein Road, as you might imagine, it's very expensive, somewhere north of $30 million is the preliminary estimate, which is significant regardless of the situation, but certainly when you're talking about 400 units or so, it's beyond the ability to fund for any one developer, given the remaining development potential out there. Another consideration when looking at Klein is there's not currently a signaled intersection at the Guide Meridian and Klein. So anytime you would look at building a signal on the state highway, you would need to work with WashDOT. And WashDOT's been pretty clear with the city over time that adding signalized intersections to the Guide Meridian is not their first priority. They would rather we use existing intersections that are already signalized. So those are some of the challenges with Klein. When we look at the natural progression of an east-west connector as the city develops to the north, we started looking at Horton Road as a potential option, given the fact that Horton Road has an existing signal at the Guide Meridian. Improvements have already been made at Horton and the Guide. It's constructed west all the way through Cordada, somewhere west of Cordada, so you have a significant amount of Horton Road that's already been built. Horton Road's been in the city's six-year tip for many years now. We've actually got several funding sources attributed to Horton Road, including some federal money, certainly the private mitigation that Alan spoke about earlier, as well as city dollars. The project's well underway to be designed, or under design already and has some nice benefits of constructing Horton. So we looked at all of those factors and decided that Horton Road, in working with the county, because it's important that we work with our partners in the county because a portion of Horton Road is in the county, it's outside the city limits. Actually, everything west of Aldrich Road is in the county's jurisdiction. So part of this was working closely with our counterparts at the county, as well as the regional transportation organization, the COG, and modeling this. All of that resulted in the transportation folks recommending that the focus for the east-west connection be on Horton Road. It's a shorter connection, significant amount of it is already constructed, it will be much less expensive to construct. We can phase it in pretty naturally from the current western terminus to Aldrich Road as the city's portion, and then the county's portion from Aldrich Road over to Northwest. It serves the same ultimate benefit, which is to get that east-west connection over to the interstate, in this case to Northwest Road up to Slater, and accessing the interstate in that regard, all of which takes pressure off of Baker View. Another thing to consider is the city's currently designing and hopefully will be constructing starting this year and certainly in the next year, Mahogany, which will be an east-west connector from Northwest to Pacific Highway. So we're looking at that progression to the north to serve development with urban services. So our recommendation has been to look at, or to move that east-west connector criteria or responsibility from Klein to West Horton. It's important to note that the developer would still need to develop Klein within their property. So as they develop the E8/E9 subdivision, they would construct Klein as it abuts their development. And they would construct Klein to an urban standard, to our arterial standard. So Klein will still be built within the subdivision and a connection will be made over to Aldrich Road. The connection that's unlikely to ever be made would be the connection east to the Guide. So there'll still be requirements to build Aldrich within the subdivision. And then as we progress north or development happens to the north out into the future, other east-west connections could be considered on their own merit. So that's how we got to where we are today. There's been quite a bit of transportation modeling that's been done using the COG's travel demand model, working with the developer, with city staff, consultants in the county. And we believe that this is the best alternative to deal with not only the current issues in the development, to serve E8/E9 and their proportionate share of the trips, but also provide that needed east-west connection. So I have some of the transportation folks here. If you have additional questions, we'd be happy to answer anything regarding why Horton, why we moved from Klein to Horton.
Gene Roxanne, then Dan.
Yeah, you answered part of it Ted, one section of Horton's in the county. How does that work?
So the city and the county have been working closely on this. In fact, we applied for some federal grant dollars together as a joint project and were successful in getting those dollars. So about $4 million between the city and the county. One thing to note is that the larger, more expensive section is in the county. So the city's section of Aldrich is in the $5, $5.5 million to construct, whereas the county's is probably twice that due to the length. So what we'd like to do is if this is successful and the council approves this development agreement ultimately, has worked with the county, we've got some letters of support from them already, to enter into an interlocal agreement that the city would first take any mitigation money, payments from a developer, and construct the city's portion first because that's where the urban development is occurring. Working with the county to design and come up with the alignment for the western half down to Northwest, which will also include intersection improvements at Northwest and Horton. And what John and I, John Hutching, the Public Works Director at the county, have spoken about is through this interlocal agreement, the city actually doing the design because we're already designing West Horton, our portion, design the county's portion as well with money from the county. The county would be funding that work. And that project would then be designed to a level that we could go out county and the city together and look for funding to complete that section. So we'll certainly be partnering with the county, certainly until it becomes part of the city. If it ever does get annexed into the city, then it would be the city's responsibility. But in the near term, it will definitely be a partnership between the city and the county.
I think it makes sense.
What is the developer's contribution to Horton and how does Mahogany tie into Horton?
Right, so the developer's contribution to Horton over time, and this is based just on the development of the E8/E9 plat, and that's around 430 homes or so, it's a mix of single-family and multifamily. Their total contribution will be 1.5 million. The way that was arrived at was we took all of the projects that were identified in the PUD and it wasn't just the east-west connector. There were other intersections that were identified specifically in the PUD as requirements of development. We took all of those, there's about six locations, we took them all. We came up with cost estimates. The county came up with cost estimates for the projects that were in the county, the city with the projects that were in the city. The developer did the same thing with all of them and those were kind of the costs of the projects. They were different a little bit between what we thought it would cost to build and the developer. Then as part of this whole process, there was an independent traffic study done. And the traffic study looked at this particular development, all of the surrounding traffic, the projected traffic through the 2036 period, which is generally how we look at development, the impacts, not just now, but what will the impacts be as it develops over time with the background traffic increasing. And we came up with their percentage impact on each one of those projects, based on the development of E8/E9, whether it was, they had 2% or 4% or 5%, whatever it was, based on the trip distribution. And then we took those numbers and sat down and negotiated over the last year or so with the developer. We were pretty close, but we had to work some things out. That's how we came up with the 1.5 million dollars. You'll see in the development agreement how that's structured. $500,000 to the city, a million to the county, and that's based on the cost of those projects, ours being less expensive than the county's. The development agreement says that the money could be used for other projects in the PUD, but the city and county staff fully intend to put the money on Horton. That's the only project in the tip, that's where the money would go. The $500,000 that comes to the city would be due upon the approval of the next phase of the plat, which I know the developer's anxious, I'm sure they'll speak to this later tonight, to move forward on. So we believe the timing of that would be near. The remaining million comes as future phases of the development are built over time and there's some language in the development agreement that talks about it's a $400,000 payment and then it's a $600,000 payment based on the specifics of the phasing of the project. So it is timed, but the $500,000 would be upfront. That would put the city's portion fairly close to being funded. If we put, if we're able to find some money in the 2017-18 biennium, I believe we'd have a funded project and be able to start construction in 18 perhaps on the city's portion of Horton.
Councilmember Lillyquist, and then Barker.
So I'll start, my first question has to do with Klein Road. You say that the developer will be still responsible for developing Klein Road as it abuts their development, not to the arterial standard we're talking about, but I guess to a lower collector standard or something like that. But the development agreement only talks about phases one, two, and three in the foreseeable future. If only one, two, and three are built, will they still need to do that one little spur of Klein Road that goes out to Aldrich, which is next to four, it's not next to three or one or two?
So what's proposed now, and I'll ask Brent to jump up here if I'm not accurate in this or complete my response. For the next phase, a fire access road would be built out to Klein to provide secondary fire access. It wouldn't be opened up to the public, but it would be, something would be available for emergency services to access off of Aldrich Road. Then as two, three are built, they would have to build their frontage. If four never gets built, and if four never gets built all the way and they don't have to build Klein to the city's standard based on frontage requirements, I believe it would stay as a fire access road. Brent? Just to make sure I got that accurate. I believe that's the case. So to your question, if they don't-
Can you also describe what a fire access road looks like? Is it closed off of bollards at either end or what?
Yeah, that's actually a very good question because we talked about that quite a bit. One of the things that we wanted to do was with the fire access road, make sure that the full base was put in place. So you talk about impacts, environmental impacts for constructing a street, we want to make sure that those are dealt with upfront so that, let's say that the development doesn't finish all the way and the requirement to construct to Aldrich is never fully met, the city could then come in and build that last remaining section of Klein and we wouldn't have to worry about the impacts, the clearing impacts, you know, widening and having further weather mitigation impacts, things of that nature, that the entire base would be installed as part of the fire access road. So we try to protect against, in the agreement, we tried to protect against incomplete infrastructure. But if four, as it's depicted up there, phase four's never built, then that final section of Klein would be a city requirement.
You didn't have to talk. Did you want to talk?
No, I didn't even have to.
Do you have anything you wanted to add?
For the record, Brent Baldwin, Development Manager for Public Works. That's exactly right. In fact, we even spoke about, well, let me back up. We do feel that the developer is going to continue through all the phases. They have an interest in providing the housing and it is what they do. So we don't feel that they are going to not finish the phase four, but if they do not, like Ted said, the base of the road will be in. At that time, we can make a decision, is it important at this point to open up Klein Road? And if so, we could do it with part of the annual overlay if we wanted, or provide some smaller project that would be at a reasonable cost for the city.
Councilmember Barker. So my questions are in regards to what will all of this mean to Aldrich and the entrance point on Northwest that's already quite congested and a bit of a, what I would assume is a dangerous little point there trying to turn left as you come off, does that make sense? So my understanding is the Horton to Northwest, that's unlikely for a decade, I mean, could be at least five years. So in the meantime, are we prepared with this traffic study to deal with that contentious point right there, which is a major, if people want to start riding their bicycles to school, that whole Northwest Baker View intersection coming off? And I guess my concern with that is if we're not ready and we don't either have the plans or an understanding of funding, it's going to shift the tip and there's been all kinds of projects that have been waiting for a very long time. So have you guys thought about that, had conversations in regards to what your thoughts are on that point?
We have thought about that. There will certainly be increased traffic on Aldrich, it's certainly likely that that would happen. We've looked at that. We have a project, a safe route to school project on the six-year tip now. We've got federal safe route to school money to construct the sidewalk to the elementary school. And so we're mindful of the impacts, the lack of infrastructure that's out there right now and trying to address that over time. We don't have any plans at this point to construct any further improvements on Aldrich, but we've modeled it all and we believe that Aldrich, even with increased traffic, it's so underused at this point from a transportation perspective, even though it's not built to full city standard, we believe that there's capacity in the future. Obviously, we'll have completed Mahogany as well. We're making improvements, or we have on the six-year tip, to look at, to study Northwest Baker View, which is a challenging intersection and really, in that area, really the most problematic intersection. Some of that will be addressed in some ways with the West Baker View interchange improvements, but all of that's been recognized as part of that Baker View interchange project. So we don't have plans to reconstruct Aldrich, that would be very expensive, other than adding sidewalk for the safe routes to school. But we did, as part of the traffic impact, take the distribution, trip distributions all the way out. So we take them from the E8/E9 subdivision all the way out until the trips go away from that division and believe that this is the best connection to make at this time.
You're not expecting that intersection of where Aldrich hits Northwest and then people want to continue down to city center with the level of traffic that you projected, you don't foresee that needing any improvements?
I think over time, it wouldn't be anything that would be based on this particular development, but over time, we'll certainly see increased traffic in that area. But when we look at the impacts of E8/E9 and their proportionate fair share of the construction, there's nothing that would warrant any improvements at that intersection.
Thank you. I have a question. Ted, do we have any plans right now for any east-west connectors that connect right to the I-5 up in that northern area?
Up by Slater?
By Slater or something, anything in between Baker View and Slater? Where are we at plans of something that goes all the way to the freeway?
So right now, the focus is on, and there's money in the budget, to make improvements at the actual Baker View interchange. And what's likely to happen is some type of reconfiguration of the interchange to provide a northbound on-ramp on the east side of the interchange. So rather, if you're westbound on Baker View, rather than having to cross over the interstate and use the northbound flyover, you would get on right there on the east side in a more traditional configuration. That will certainly add some capacity to that interchange and help Baker View in that whole corridor. The Mahogany connection is just north of that.
Where's Mahogany?
So Mahogany would be just north of Baker View, on the north side of the area that's proposed for Costco. And let's see, Brent, can you go, is it on there? It's not on there. We're not that far down.
You carry it further than it is.
It would be, we'll try to find a map here for you.
I keep hearing Mahogany and I've looked on the maps and I, Google is non-responsive. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just north, it would be the next logical north of Baker View connection. You can't find it because it doesn't exist at this point. It's what sometime called the Division right-of-way, but there were some challenges from a naming perspective for streets. We've done that before and so Division was not a, we couldn't use Division. We used to call it Division, we can't use Division from an emergency services perspective. So Brent's going to show you where it's at.
Oops. So at the very bottom of the map, right here, is Baker View. And then Northwest obviously goes up at the angle. So you can see the dotted line here from Pacific Highway over to Northwest, that's what Mahogany is going to become in the next year.
So the important thing about that connection is it allows people to get from Northwest over to Pacific Highway without having to come down into the Baker View corridor. So it takes some pressure off Baker View, which is nice.
Thank you. I know you've probably presented on this before, but it's hard to retain all of that information.
No, I understand. There's a few things that are underway to take pressure off of Baker View and other interchanges along the corridor. But Mahogany is probably the primary, I mentioned the, on the six-year tip, the intersection at Northwest and Baker View. Fully signalized intersection with protected movement, but it's still a challenging intersection and we need to look at, are there other things that could be done there? The county has on their program, and it was funded with the most recent state fuel tax improvements on Slater, that consist of roundabouts. improvements on Slater that consist of roundabouts. You know that they put in the compact roundabouts. Those were a temporary solution, although they're functioning pretty nicely. The long-term solution is full roundabouts, including a roundabout at northwest and Slater. So you start looking at all of those east-west connections, mahogany, Baker View improvements, mahogany improvements, improvements along the Horton alignment, ultimately, they'll be over to northwest, improvements at Slater. All of the focus is on trying to increase that east-west connectivity, knowing that now, everything comes down to Baker View. Or you go up to Smith Road, and you can't get to the interstate, because there's no interchange. So it's high on the state's priority. I think it's shown in the fact that it was funded so heavily in the recent state transportation package.
Thank you. Councilmember Lillicust and Hamill?
Actually, I had a similar set of questions. Horton is like three-quarters of a mile south of where Klein would be if it was built. And I'm sort of interested in actually going a shorter distance north, the Kelly alignment. You know, as, you know, if you didn't know it was on the ground, looking at a map alone, Kelly is a great road to come all the way across. Kelly actually lines up with an existing segment of Aldrich. Kelly is closer to going straight into where Slater is to the north. I mean, it seems like an east-west alignment would be really good to actually have, be just north of what we're talking about, rather than moving it further south. So in the longer term, I'm wondering, and that's all like out in the county, but in the longer term, I'm wondering about the east-west alignments just to the north where we're talking about, as opposed to further south inside the city.
Right. And so the map that I just put up, the red line to the north, that is the Kelly Road alignment, a proposed Kelly Road alignment that would take advantage of-
Could you put your finger on the Klein Road, and then also Kelly?
So here's Klein, Kelly. So here's Kelly over here. It would swoop a little bit. This is obviously just, there's no formal alignment, but one of the discussions that's been going on as part of all of this development, including the potential of future annexation to the north, if the city does ever decide to move the UGA to the north, is how do you serve that area? I think the answer is, from our perspective, west Horton makes sense as we continue to move north, portions of Klein to be constructed, and ultimately, it may make sense to build the Kelly connection as well. But that would be done under more traditional development, where you're not looking at the PUD and the back-ended, back-loaded mitigation requirements, but rather mitigation required as part of development if that ever happens to the north. So I think it's a good point, and likely that as development continues to occur in the northern end, something that would be considered. I know that it's been looked at many times, and the improvements at Slater Road will only facilitate something like that in the future.
Councilmember Hamill?
I'm wondering if you could discuss the implications to the city in relationship to a quiet title lawsuit as outlined in 5.3.3 on page 14 in the pack in.
I could address that. I plan to address that tonight, but that's really, I prefer not to get into specific terms of the development agreement this afternoon to do that during the public hearing, and I can address that this evening.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Lillicust?
So Ted, actually kind of continuing, I want to talk about King Mountain and the long-term plans for a connection from King Mountain over to Meridian.
Could we bring this back to this discussion?
This discussion is about the overall transportation issues in the north part of our city. This is not about the development agreement. This is actually about transportation planning.
I'm going to defer to Ted whether you feel this is relevant to this discussion.
Well, I do, I do agree that it all does play together. We would be happy, and this, we'll certainly have this discussion with the Planning Commission and ultimately council, when we look at the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. But look at future connections in the comp plan. King Mountain certainly is one of them, Bull James Street going up to the Van Wick, and Van Wick to Meridian, but also looking at other opportunities to go to the east. And maybe we could have a broader conversation as part of the comp plan, which I would maybe have some better graphics that we could throw up there and facilitate the discussion a little bit. If that would, if that's appropriate, I'd be happy to come back and have that conversation with council, even prior to your comprehensive plan discussions, if that's what you'd like.
Would that satisfy?
No, I think it's completely inappropriate. I think this is relevant to the current issue. I'm wondering if King Mountain comes over in a way which better connects with the Horton connection rather than with another alignment. That's a directly relevant question to whether or not Horton is really going to be the most useful east-west connection.
I think, just briefly to touch on that, what we've envisioned certainly is the Van Wick connection, and probably in the nearer term, the connection around King Mountain as that development occurs, and we've already worked on right-of-way to get the James Street alignment up to Van Wick, Van Wick then over to the guide. The discussion of Van Wick over to, I guess would be Hannigan, is not, what?
Yes.
Is one that I would need to talk to Brent and Chris a little bit more about. I don't have all the details, what we've looked at in the past, unless you're prepared to speak to it.
No, that's exactly right. One thing to, I think it's, some of it's terminology. We keep talking about the east-west connection, but for this particular subject, it is specific to the PUD area, the east-west connection through that PUD. There's also east-west connectivity in the north end of the city, and that's, Ted's exactly right, the comprehensive plan process is where we attack that. The Horton Road extension is a critical length in our, link in our east-west connectivity up there. And we've spent many, many years trying to figure out, how can we get east-west up there because of all of the critical areas and the development scenarios and the PUD in the middle of it? But I think for today's discussion, the Horton, it's really the issue of, should we leave it at Klein, or should we bring it to Horton? And I think, as Ted had explained before, Horton's a better place for us to be able to say, yes, we can get this built, and it already can connect to the guide with a signalized intersection and function in a way that we need it to function for that east-west connectivity in the north end of town.
That's very helpful. I think that through this, we're learning that obviously the council, maybe we could have a presentation more on delving into the comprehensive plan and some of our connectors, and maybe a little bit of more education on the PUD and relationship there. Councilmember Parker?
Sorry. My question is in regards to the phasing of development and seven being the last. I know that right now, we're feeling the pressure inside current city limits. We're saying the most difficult lots were left for last, and are the most expensive, and so they're the most unlikely. And then the pressure comes on us to extend possibly our boundaries. And so looking at seven and understanding that that is probably going to be the most difficult and the most expensive to develop, my concern is that it doesn't get developed. So is there anything in this agreement that forces the hand to say, this has to be, it's not you're going to get to seven and go, this is really expensive, we've really gotten a lot of the housing that we needed, we're going to go ahead and build the fire lane, it sounds like, but we're not going to develop this area? And if so, some type of an agreement that, because there is, you know, the garden and other things there, that we could come up to an agreement with the city. Is there anything we can do in this?
Well, so that's a really good question. Again, I would really like to keep that for tonight. That's a great question. The owners of E8, E9, Plimery Platt, their representatives are here this afternoon, but they'll have a chance to answer that as also the city will. But that, you're identifying a potential issue.
Thank you, Alan. I'm going to call this, because it sounds like a lot more of this is going to come out in tonight's public hearing, and move on to our next item, which is the discussion on the Waukam County Emergency Medical System and Funding Work Group. Chief Newbold will give our presentation. This is a follow-up to our April 11th, 2016 council presentation on the Waukam County EMS Funding Work Group recommendation to create a fully funded, sustainable county-wide EMS system that eliminates the combined City of Bellingham and Waukam County general fund contributions that help fund the current system. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Chief.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Bill Newbold, Fire Department. I'm also joined by Brian Heinrich from the mayor's office. Together, Brian and I sat on the EMS Funding Work Group as members of the overall work group, and then also with the subgroups. Councilmember Terry Bornham was also a member on that and sat on one of the different subgroups from Brian and myself, but also a member of the EMS Funding Work Group. Exactly as you stated, our purpose here today is to answer any questions that council members may have after seeing the presentation last week on April 11th, and then an opportunity of reading through the full final report.
Councilmember Knutson?
I'll be brief. I move approval of this.
I'll be brief second.
Exactly the right thing to do.
Any discussion, additional comments?
What is the motion? Approval of what? I mean, are we going to do a resolution?
The Work Group recommendations, the one that they brought in front of us last week.
Councilmember Bornham?
Well, I think first with, as part of that motion, Gene, we probably need a motion to direct staff-
Oh, okay.
...to bring forward a ordinance-
That's fine.
Yeah. Accepting those recommendations and directing county to put it on the 2016 general election ballot.
Yeah.
Accepting recommendations and to-
Including putting it on the 2016 general election ballot.
Sounds like a good idea.
I'll second that.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Whatever Terry said, you've got that.
Just give me two seconds here. Accepting recommendation from maybe... Okay, so the motion, any other discussion before I put this motion on the table?
I do want to say, next Monday, we will be having an EMS oversight meeting, at which time, hopefully, we will, the Oversight Board will also vote on this, and we will let them know the result of this at that time.
And, Councilmember Parker?
Well, I'm excited to see this come forward, and thankful to Terry and so many others for the process. I know in our retreat, we did talk about those essential services, and, you know, everybody can make an argument for what, but I can tell you that I personally feel like the most essential is, if I have to call 911, I know somebody's going to be there, be educated, be compassionate, and this to me, if we can't argue, that it's an essential service. So I'm really excited to support it, and I'm really thankful of the process, and I think Pinky nailed it last time, that this is a process that we really could do for so many other things. So again, thank you for all your work, and I'll be supporting as soon as we get a chance to support, support, ballot support.
Any other comments or suggestions? Okay. So correct me if I get this wrong, or please jump in, but I believe the motion in front of us is for the city council to accept the recommendations by the EMS Oversight Board, and to include direction to the county council to include these actions and recommendations on the 2016 ballot. Is that?
I think part of the motion is to direct staff to prepare-
Staff, resolution.
Thank you.
Yes, a resolution, including that, those items. So-
Okay, so, yes, please.
Could I crash out at this? That the motion would be to direct staff to prepare a resolution in support of the EMS Working Group's levy recommendations, including putting it on the ballot for the 2016 general election.
Is that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And the record, the record should indicate that Terry made the appropriate motion. I'll withdraw my motion I made before, so that makes better sense.
And seconded by Gene. Councilmember Lillicust?
Sure. So last time when this came up, I think we were told, it kind of surprised me, that both the city and the county council would need to pass concurrent resolutions if it were to go on the ballot in November. So I just want to make sure that this resolution is adequate to that purpose. I think that's Terry's intent, that it serves that specific purpose and meets whatever requirements are necessary for that.
That is correct.
Great.
Okay, I'm going to do abbreviated version of that one more time. So the motion in front of us is for the council to direct staff to put a recommendation on the EMS, the recommendations of the EMS board, and direct that to the county council for the 2016-
No.
No?
It's to direct staff to prepare a resolution-
To prepare a resolution.
Yes. That will come back to us. To prepare a resolution in support of the EMS Working Group's recommendation-
Okay.
-including putting it on the ballot. And that will come back to us.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Newbold. Third item for Committee of the Whole today is a discussion on Bellingham Greenways Levy Number Four. The Greenways Number Four Levy Campaign Committee has been working to consider the future of the program and propose the next campaign. Seth Fleetwood, chairman of the committee, will provide an update on their work and where they hope to go from here. So Seth Fleetwood, who is the chair of the Greenways Four Levy Campaign Committee, will doing a presentation for us. And Seth is a former city council member, so he's pretty familiar with this drill. Thanks, Seth. Nothing like the pressure of everyone staring at you. It happens to me all the time. Please.
Yeah, two turns. Okay. Thank you, sir.
It's been a while. Okay. Oh, thank you. So appreciate council, mayor, staff, everyone, for giving me an opportunity to give an update today relating to greenways. I appreciate it very much. As you know, when, per custom, going back to 1990, this has been very much a citizen-sponsored effort, and when each greenways is soon to sunset, a group of citizens have come forward and proposed what the new iteration, the next levy might be. And so, as you know, presently, Greenways Three is soon to sunset at the end of this year, and a group of interested citizens got together, I should mention their names. It's a group that has a lot of experience, a lot of years put in on greenways and parks issues, and it's sort of boiled down to a core group of us that have been meeting since last summer. Stan Snap, Dave Marshak, Vinsa Bachunas, Ted Rosen, Alex McLean, Rosalie Nast, Julie Guy, John Blethyn, who's here right now, Jack Weiss, who of course retired from council recently, took a well-deserved break, but he's back, and he's been meeting with us as well. So we've all been doing our thing. We've tried to be diligent in our work. We've met with staff members. We've met with various officials from the Parks Department, including the Parks Director, Leslie Bryson, Past Parks Director, James King. We've learned about the needs of the greenways programs, long-term concerns, the need for more maintenance, for development. So we've tried to do our due diligence, and we've listened, and we've considered the concerns that were expressed, and we've crafted a plan for your consideration that we think is responsive to the needs of the city. It's very much based upon the Greenway Strategic Plan and the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. At this time, if I may, I'll just read into the record a statement, we can call it a vision if you'd like, that- if you'd like, that the group has crafted, just so they get a sense of where we're coming from, and then I'll go into some more details. Since 1990, Bellingham's popular greenways levy has expressed our community's desire to incorporate our forests, meadows, shores, and open spaces into the fabric of our lives and our growing city. Greenways, perhaps the most popular program in our city's history, has created new and beloved public places, ensured the creation of more such places, and established the form of a vital green infrastructure for our citizens. Based on established needs and past accomplishments, the Greenway Four vision commits our community to ongoing creation, enrichment, and expansion of a first-class system of parks, trails, and natural spaces as we grow. Utilizing the publicly-vetted Greenway Strategic Plan and the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, the Greenways Four Levy proposes to acquire, develop, and maintain public places to serve our growing and changing population. While our program must be adaptable and responsive to changing times and conditions, there's also the need to improve, enhance, and steward recently-acquired sites and corridors. The quality of Bellingham will continue to benefit enormously in multiple ways, health, environmental, economic, from completing projects listed on our Visionary Parks and Greenways Plan. Continuing greenways by reauthorizing a popular levy that we have enjoyed for 25 years is forward-looking and will secure a legacy for the next 100 years in our community. At the end of the day, what we're asking is for you to continue greenways. We think that there's a compelling need for it, we think that there's concern if there's a lapse, if we went through a period of time where suddenly there wasn't that levy being assessed any longer, and then we tried to bring it back in some form, we think that that could be a concern. I'd like to note a couple of changes. One of the things that each group that reimagines the next levy does is consider whether or not there are any expanded enabled uses that we might consider. And John Blethyn, who is here, was a passionate spokesperson in our group for the idea that we need to think about how the next greenways levy might be incorporated into the city's broader plans as it relates to climate issues. And so we gave that some thought. We recognize there's a plan that the city utilizes relating to climate response, and it's a good plan, and how we incorporate parks and greenways into that is an open question. But as we thought about it, and as John expressed, he thought there could be a compelling need for an expanded use of community gardens in the future, and we're not proposing that as a major allocation of funds for that, but we certainly are including some as a potential allowed use. We also think that the next greenways levy should have some funds available for ecological restorations in a number of sites around the community. I would note, as it relates to percentiles, the last greenways levy, Greenways Three that passed in 2006, was about a $44 million levy, and at that time, 60% of those funds were for acquisitions, and 31% were for development, and 9% were for an endowment fund, to accrue interest that could then be used to help pay for maintenance concerns. This levy, we're proposing to inverse the greater use from the past for the first time. Rather than having the primary amount go to acquisitions, the primary amount would go to development. And again, that's in response to concerns that have been expressed by the administration. The mayor has mentioned that need. So we're proposing, as an idea, 42% for project development, trail building, park development, restorations, 31% for acquisitions of properties needed for future trails, parks, and connections between the trails and the parks, and for the first time, a specific dedicated amount for maintenance. 17% as a standalone for maintenance of parks and trails previously created through prior greenways levies and other City of Bellingham actions. We're also proposing that we maintain a dedicated fund for Greenways Preservation Endowment to accrue interest with proceeds to supplement maintenance of properties acquired or developed with Greenway levy funds. So there are substantial changes, and in our view, they're responsive to the needs of the city. I would point you to the project list. It's a variety of items which, for the most part, are consistent with your own greenways and parks recreation open space plan. So these are identified needs for the future of the greenways program, and I'll just very quickly summarize them, but they're projects, and exciting projects all over town. It's regionally balanced, things in the north, the south, the west, the east. We've identified needs for Cordotta Community Park, Stage Development, major new park for growing neighborhood, Little Squalicum Park, trails, continued improvements to the wetlands, the salt marsh, the beach, the trail, and the pier that's there. There's an exciting opportunity with that. Yeah, high five on that. Beta Baker, Squalicum Creek Corridor include neighborhood parks, habitat corridors, trail anchors, Rotor Avenue to Dewey Valley, Baker View Connector, and Telegraph Trail, King and Queen Mountain, access to the existing open space with trail development in that area, the waterfront, Wacom Waterway, parks, trails, granary, to bring the people and the public to our waterfront, waterfront, open space, trails, beach enhancements, and for Cornwall Beach Park, waterfront, open space, trails, beach enhancements. We've identified funds for Gallibrith Mountain Access, parking and access to trails, Trailhead, Park Trail Anchor, Barclay Neighborhood, Trail Anchor Park. This was an idea that I believe was not on the pro-plan, but it's in an area where we think that there's a compelling need, and we put that in there. To the east and south, Samish Crest Trail, continue developing the trail extension from San Juan Boulevard to Lake Patton Park, identified need in the Happy Valley neighborhood for neighborhood park, downtown plaza. This was something that was envisioned, what was the name of the city planning process for downtown? My downtown? This was identified as a major need, one of the top priorities for, in that process, was the idea of a downtown plaza, so we've got funds either for acquisition or development in that area. Continuing connectors on the Wacom Creek Corridor. And then, as it relates to maintenance, the list from the city had been primarily capital maintenance. We've just broken it down to include all of the needs identified by the city for capital maintenance, but also then put a standalone provision for maintenance labor, sort of conventional things, pruning and mowing and that sort of thing. But that would include capital projects like resealing the running track, turf replacement at Civic Field, fixtures for the athletic field drainage, et cetera. And then a multi-agency fund for a variety of placeholders that could include baseline for wildlife study, community gardens, habitat restoration, et cetera. We didn't plug in the numbers for it, that's for, it correlates well with the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, it does have figures, nobody knows precisely what those are. So we think that these are exciting projects, that an active campaign would sell to an enthusiastic and receptive Bellingham public. I would point out that we are mindful of the discussion that you're having relating to LOS and the budget gap. Those are serious things that you're having to discuss and consider. The group clearly is, we're Greenways Group, and we're promoting greenways, and we think that there's a need for it, to be a forward-thinking city, there's a demand that's established to continue that greenways legacy. And so, of course, it's our hope that you would consider putting that on the ballot, if that's what you choose to do in your judgment. I've spoken to the mayor, I understand that there's discussion relating to Metropolitan Parks District, and we had a meeting amongst our group, the Greenways Four Levy Campaign Committee, and we talked about that, and if in your judgment that was the direction you chose to go, we would, I guess, propose, from our group anyway, we would characterize these as ideas, I don't want to say conditions, because we're in no position to make it sound like we're demanding conditions, but the conditions that nonetheless, that we would hope you would consider, for our group's point of view, would be that, A, you, if this does by some means get folded into an MPD concept, that you consider maintaining, A, a conventional greenways component, a substantial chunk of that money for conventional greenways development and acquisition. If you were to run an MPD at 75 cents, for example, and it brought in around $7 million, we would hope that you would consider perhaps half of that sum for conventional greenways. And we would also ask, that would, instead of bringing in $4.5 million, which our proposal would bring in in the first year, at 50 cents, most of our group supports the idea of 50 cents, that's a seven-cent reduction, and it's responsive, again, to what we heard from the city in last year's retreat. But we would ask that a substantial chunk go towards conventional greenways to maintain that legacy, and also that you would maintain an Oversight Committee. I know there's been talk about the idea of getting rid of the Greenways Oversight Committee, and we would ask, as a consideration, if you were to do an MPD, that you maintain that citizen oversight component. It's been an important part of the greenways legacy, that it's citizen-intensive, and that's something that we hope you would consider maintaining. So there you be. We intended to come to you in the month of April and present our vision of the next greenways, and we had thought that maybe in May, we would present to you a request to pass a resolution placing it on the ballot this November. We'll make that formal request now, because I know you're gonna have important conversations in the coming days and weeks, but you know where we're coming from, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Questions, discussion from councilmembers? Councilmember Howell Barker, then Bornham.
I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts, this is a 26-year effort by groups of citizens that have come forward and have seen the value of providing for greenways and open spaces and parks in our community. I think it's one of the things that sets us aside from different communities throughout the state, throughout the country, is this kind of forward-thinking and the understanding of not just the utility of open space, but the value of it, and the value of recreation and, you know, family sharing it and so forth. I guess my curiosity would be around how this would work with an MPD, a Metropolitan Parks District, and how that would fold together, so I would have procedural questions as it relates to that and discussions, and how that would come out of the Parks Committee. But I just wanted to acknowledge the work that's been done by citizens on this effort.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barker?
Thank you, as well. I listened a lot to the Metropolitan Parks District, and I looked at the paper we were given, and to me, it looked like it said it would take greater than two years to get something like that on the ballot. And having been a voter for quite a while, I know, I know I tend to vote things I feel really strong and passionate about, and that, for me, is schools and parks, and I think we've shown as a community that those are things that, pretty much, if they come to us, we're going to forward. And I think it would be awful for me, I'm not a gambler, I like to go with true things, and I think it's, I trust the citizens to do what they thought was right, and I would assume that that would be to pass another greenways. I feel like if we were even think about not doing this, which I don't know where we're at with that, my concern would be you have to educate a whole voter about what a Metropolitan Parks District is, and the possibility that you could lose both. So for me, I haven't been convinced that there should be anything different than a greenways levy, and I'm really excited that you guys brought it forward, and that it looks like it will take some pressure off of the general fund. I think I read it was about $1 to $2 million possibly because of the improvements, it's not just a greenway acquisition. So I'm really thankful for that. And I want to know specifically, this is coming from some constituents, how specific does it have to be in the layout of where the money will go, in the sense of, there's been a lot of people who are in different types of activities that really want to see Bellingham acknowledged and be at the forefront of things like parkour and pump tracks, that rock walls, bouldering parks, that could really get kids activated and outside, that's morphing with our changing youth, so hopefully they can stay passionate about outdoors. And right now, what it comes to, if it's a little bit different, many times, I know, like currently, the Wacom Mountain Bike Association is trying to get a pump track over in Wacom Falls Park, but it comes down to, well, are you gonna build it, are you gonna maintain it, are you gonna build an agreement with it? And that's really tough, when like a bunch of youth get together and they really want to skate park somewhere, and to ask them to do all of that is quite a bit. So is there room to talk about those types of things that are really dedicated to getting our youth outdoors and morph with the change in recreation, that we could leave a little bit of money for, to kind of hopefully excite the younger voters and get them out?
Yeah, so the, a couple of things, I think that relates to public trust. How do we ensure that the promises that are represented in a greenways campaign actually happen? And there's a number of ways, I think, that you can do that. First off, as it relates to the various projects where there's acquisition and development funds available, presumably the sorts of things that you're talking about as amenities could be incorporated into some of those. But the way I think that you establish the public trust is the documents that we present. The resolution that you may at some point pass, putting something on the ballot, can include recitals, which is your public purpose statement, where you express allowable uses, so that you identify that there's this intention, that that's the sort of thing that we're thinking of doing. The campaign materials that we use, another way that you establish trust, you identify things, the sorts of things that we want, and the citizens, when they vote, clearly are, at least in large part, voting for those sorts of things. So you talk about them in sort of the public documents. At the end of the day, of course, council holds the power of the purse, and you get to make decisions, but I think you're hemmed in on your decisions to some degree by the parameters that are expressed in the greenways plan.
Councilmember Bornham, then Lilligus, then me.
Yeah, this idea of the greenways levy is something the council, you know, was anticipated, anticipating, and I think for the most part, have been supporting and wanting to go forward. The Metropolitan Park District is something that's totally new to us, this just appeared before us this week.
It was in Paul's report.
Well, we started hearing about it just really recently, we don't know any details yet, very few, it's going to take some talking through, figure out how all of this works, and we haven't decided, you know, whether we're gonna look at that, whether we're gonna do it, all we've decided is we will, we've agreed to look at it, to listen, and things. The greenways levy, we have, for the most part, decided in the past that, yeah, we want this to go forward, and I don't know how, I think we would have to look at how the two mesh, but I'm real supportive of that going forward, because it could take a while for us to get the Metropolitan Parks District the idea, and then decide do we really support it, because I don't know if I support it, I've just started hearing about it, and so, I haven't given it that much thought, so I would like for us to see it going forward. The one question I have is, hopefully, the EMS levy's going on in November, and I know I was a supporter of this going on with that on those elections, but I'm not sure when the primary election happens, August. Would, if we were to look at that as a date, would the Greenways Committee be able to get up and running to put it on the August one as opposed... get up and running, to put it on the August one, as opposed to the November one, just so they're not competing on the same ballot? Just, I know this is, throws a new wrinkle in, I'm just, I'm just curious. Because I know you've got a great committee, and you know what you're doing.
What, what day is that in August? It's early, isn't it?
It's in August.
But isn't it like August 8th or something? It's early August.
Yeah, probably the...
I mean, if you were to assume that a greenways levy were placed on the ballot in May, it would mean we have June, well, it sounds like we'd have three months. We've been planning on November, which is, you know, extensive period of time, the summer and the fall. I mean, we'll do whatever we, we have to do. The concern that you hear over the years, whenever these kinds of things come forward, there's always strong voices who point out and remind us that lots of Bellinghamsters are off doing fun things in the summer. And that often is very, very low turnout. One of the appealing aspects of this, the greenways levy, especially this year, or whatever it is that gets put forward, is that we benefit from presumably, large turnout in Bellingham in November. We'll do what, what we must do.
Okay.
Mr. Bornham, yeah.
Yeah, I did, this was just, I was just thinking about it one more. Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Lillquist.
Well, I like what I'm hearing. I know the city council talked about this over a year ago. We knew that the greenways levy would need to be renewed if, when it expired. We talked about changes that would be, that could be made to it. What I'm hearing here is a, is a good vision and a good proposal, that's along the lines of what the council and the community had already been talking about. It's smarter, it's slightly smaller, and it's refocused on current needs, reprioritized for the next decade rather than the previous decades. You know, years ago, the concern was to buy up properties while they were still even there to buy. Now we have properties, we need some key pieces to connect things together, but what we have is often undeveloped. It's not actually available to our community yet. The north side has two major but undeveloped park properties up in there. So we've gotten halfway to our promise. I like how this is refocused, because I think it actually delivers the final element of the promise. I like the fact also that it's slightly smaller in, it's not much smaller, but it is smaller. It's realistic. One of the things we talked about during our retreat, or that I brought up, is that rather than thinking of all the ways we can increase taxation, let's look where we can reduce them, so the priorities are different. I talked about the aggressiveness of our utility taxes. It'd be nice to reduce those regressive utility taxes, even if we had to increase in some other way. So the net effect might be zero to the city, but very positive to the community. So I like the fact that it's actually adjusted downward as well as refocused. I'm kind of with you, Terry. I'm not against the idea of a Metropolitan Park District. It's not fully developed. And also, I, the, my understanding is that 75 cents just would not be enough to run a greenways program and our park district. That park district could not actually take over all the functions that the city currently has, especially if greenways has to be included in that mission. There's just not enough money there. So there'd be an ongoing general fund subsidy, or a co-partnership between the city and the park district, where the city might actually contract to carry out some functions of the park district. It's a complicated proposal, and it's not ready yet. And I'm with you, April. This is the sort of thing our community has supported in the past. It's understood, it meets our needs. So, at this point, I, I'd look very seriously at putting it on the ballot, pretty much along the lines that are presented right here. We're obviously not deciding today, but, but right now, I don't see any red flags or any reason to slow down.
Yes, greenways is beloved. I myself have served on the committee, so it's pretty easy for me to support. But I also, I really want to do my due diligence. I think this level of support discussion is something really, really big in front of us, and we have to look at everything and how, how our taxation system is going to work in regards to where our citizens are at, and overlapping everything. So, I'd like to take a look at that and have an opportunity to, to explore what Metropolitan Park District really is, because we're just at the tip of the iceberg here, and so I don't want to jump ahead. And I, I personally, myself, would like to have a little bit more information to see if there's, what direction we need to take. So I'm, I'm not ready at this point. I love greenways. I really like the changes that you guys have made. I think there's been a lot of support in regards to not just being about acquisition. You've looked at that, you've looked at how do we develop our parks, et cetera. This is a really great plan. But I myself want to wait until I understand the bigger implications of the level of service and, and the park district itself. So, that's just my opinion. Anyone else have any? Mayor Lindell?
If the council's down, or when the council's down.
Okay.
So I think if the...
Okay.
Yeah, just a comment about jumping ahead. I think the jumping ahead is putting the Metropolitan Parks discussion before the greenways, because the greenways proposal is basically a complete, and it's before us, and it's something we know, we know how it works. That, that we know. The other is something that is totally, well, not totally, we know a few things. But in terms of the structure, how it works, how all, a lot of this, this, we are just starting. So the jumping ahead would be to jump that in front of the discussion on the greenways, I think, just, that, that's where I'm at. I think this is something we need to, you know, consider while it's out here, because it does end this year. And when you end a program, restarting it, many times, is, is a really difficult process. The continuation of a program is much easier in terms of, for voters and other things, than if you let it drop, and then we decide, ah, this isn't workable with the Metropolitan, and then have to go back and retool. So that's just my thoughts.
I, this is a well-laid out plan. I want to see both plans before I make a decision, I guess is where I'm at on that. Was there anyone else? Did you have your hand up? Councilmember Howell, or...
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I don't think there's a lot of daylight between our positions in terms of Metropolitan Park District and, and, that does not preclude moving this proposal forward. That's, that's not at all what I'm, what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, this is solid, this has a 26-year history, this has committees that are well-vetted and understand the political process. What I'm saying is, I'm trying to understand the future, longer-term implications of what that MPD ends up being in relationship to this. That's all I'm, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying today.
Okay. Thank you very mu... Oh, Mayor Lindell, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did have one more, but...
Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the Greenways Committee. I met with Seth.
Thank you very much, the Greenways Committee. I want that recorded. I met with Seth early on, we've had several meetings. What I first want to say is, thank you so much, Greenways Committee, for looking at the issues that the city brought forward, and including them in your plan. I looked through this, and I'm thinking, okay, what do we base our, our proposals on? And right here, it's the, the Greenways Strategic Plan and the Pro Plan. That gives the citizens some certainty about what we're doing. And when April asked her question, certainly I believe that that's where those things could come in, and you can amend plans. That way, what you're making is a commitment to doing something forever, and that's, that's kind of how I look at this. Secondly, I look at the green, the committee's divvying up of how they'd like to see the money be spent, and the, they're basically the functions of our Parks Department. And I think it's very good to have the functions of our Park Department spelled out. I guess I might have some question about the specificity of, you know, the percentages or the, you know, we have to make sure that we're meeting our needs every year, but I think that the committee did an excellent job of listening, especially to Leslie and to James, about what, what do we want our next levy to be? So having said that, I look at this, I look at this, this piece of paper, and I think greenways forever, not Metropolitan Park District. I look at everything the committee's done, and being willing to think that fits right into what we want to do as a community. And secondly, I think about the fact that, I think there are some specifics that the staff could show you, so that you could look at that choice. If nothing changed, except we fund forever until, instead of funding for six years at a time, I'd like you to think about that question. If it, if we called it greenways, because it would be, if we use the work that the group compiled, which I think we should, because that's, they responded to our concerns, and if we said, we're making a commitment to institutionalize our parks and greenways forever, you never have to come back and, and vote on that again, I guess unless you'd want to repeal it, which I don't think would happen. And I also appreciate very much Seth, because I know how important this work was to you. And I appreciate you being willing to take the, the chairmanship of this committee. The suggestions that Seth was gracious enough to make, and what interests the Greenways Committee might have in, in making sure that there were adaptations in how things work together, or do they need to? Is there a way to make sure that we only have one thing functioning at one time? Is there a way to fill a gap or not? And also, is there a way to maintain an oversight committee to make sure that the things that were intended on our Pro Plan, on our, you know, our, our greenways plan are being implemented? So, for me, any of the questions that got raised are not insurmountable as far as having a choice. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't do this, or we, or we shouldn't do that. I'm, I am just very anxious to make, when I found out it was a, it was on the list of things that had gotten presented, and Seth and I talked about presenting it to Greenways, how long ago is the, the concept?
We proposed that a couple of months ago, and then...
And then we changed our mind. And then...
Well, you had proposed it and wanted to present it to the committee, and, and I think there was a decision not to at that time.
And then the report came out. So once the report was out, the idea was out, that's why I became more interested in it, because it wasn't something that other people hadn't seen an advantage from. I know in Tacoma, as Roxanne told me, when they did a Metropolitan Park District citywide, they had a separate board. We do that in Fairhaven. We don't have to have a separate board, any more than we have to with PBD or, or other boards. We can have the council be that board. So I think there's a lot of options available, that I just would appreciate if the, I realize we're all supportive of greenways, I'm supportive of greenways, I've never missed a vote, but I just think there's some options available. I'd really like us just to, just to analyze, and then come down wherever we think we should be. So that's, that's all I want to say, and I, I want to make sure that the Greenways Committee understands how much I appreciate their work, and especially Seth's leadership on this.
Thank you, Seth. And again, just thanks to the Greenways Committee for a really thoughtful way to, laid-out plan, and for all the people who are serving on the Greenways Committee, and have meeting and put this energy in together. So, thank you for that presentation.
Yes, and if I could just make one final closing comment, and take 10 seconds. I, I'm very aware of the importance, the power, frankly, that comes when we're all on the same page. When the mayor, the council, the citizen group, people running the campaign, and Bellinghamsters are in agreement with what we're doing. When that happens, these measures pass. And so I just urge you all to try to think about this and, and reach consensus, if you can, on direction. So I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Our next item is the...
One quick thing with this, one of the things the Greenways Committee asked was about coming back in May with this, and we didn't address anything with, because if, if we're going to at all consider greenways, we have to get to that point of, of asking directing staff to put something together, to bring to us. So I think we need to give some direction, or we need to have some idea, because I don't, I have no idea where staff is about the Metropolitan Parks District in terms of bringing anything to us, because I haven't heard anything, you know, other than...
I think we'd want to do that before May, obviously way before May.
And, and so, before we leave this, we need to, I think we need to know, because May's coming up real fast.
Okay, I think that is really important to acknowledge. Thank you, Councilmember Bornham. So, obviously, we need to have the other discussion before that. I'm not sure of the timeline in regards to our discussion on the Parks District. So I don't, I'm not really sure in the guidance of saying we will re-bring this back up for discussion by end of May. Will that be enough? Or does that seem like it's pushing it too close to not have a discussion?
This, for us, has been a very fruitful conversation internally. So I don't know if it would be a big drawn-out thing to bring something back to the council. Well, on, on the, the difference between doing a Parks District or a Greenways, I think we could, I think we could do a comparison with that, because we've been talking about it for a while, and it's been, it has, not the council chair, you're right, but the, the staff has been. So we could bring you something that you could look at, that would demonstrate to you, you know, kind of the, the differences between doing it this way and doing it that way. But I would like to do it soon enough, and I'll tell you why. Because I'm interested in something passing as soon as possible. And so I'm not thinking of this as a two- or three-year proposal. So, so, so if, if you want it sooner rather than later, I think we could do it. I'm not going to give a date until someone tells me when.
So our next meeting is already in May. So just saying in regards to our timeline here, and making sure that we have adequate time to sta, to have presentation, have opportunity for deliberation...
May 2nd is the earliest we could do it, I guess, because that's your next meeting. So we'd make the commitment to do it then.
A presentation, and then, okay, so then we have another meeting in May. What if, I'm, I'm just thinking about the timeline here, that gives us two meetings between now and then. Seth, go ahead, and I do see your hands up, councilmembers. Seth, did you have a thought around this timeline?
I was just going to reiterate, assuming that this timeframe worked, it had been the committee's hope, because the object was to be poised to actively begin in the campaign in June. Under a scenario where we went forward with something, the hope had been that, I guess I'm repeating myself, but we would present to you the idea in April, and, and then ask you to consider a resolution, put it on the ballot at the May 16th meeting. Now that was just a hope, that was just a timeline, if it doesn't happen quite that way, but I just wanted you to know, so calculate that.
I, I'm going to throw something out here. What about our first meeting in June, just to give us at least one meeting to have a presentation, and be able to have at least a couple weeks of deliberation, and then our next meeting?
Can I comment to that point?
Absolutely.
Specific to that point? So I think we need to understand filing deadline for ballot measures. I'm looking at the Secretary of State's website, and for candidate filing, and this is candidate, this is not a ballot measure, is May 20th. So I think we would need to understand from staff or from the Greenways Committee, when, when is the deadline to file? So, so we have a meeting before then to discuss what exactly we're putting on the ballot, if anything, at that point.
This is for, you're talking about, Alan just asked me a question, why don't you ask the question now?
The deadline that you're referring to, which election is it?
May 20th, candidate filing, this is for a...
For November.
This would be presumably for general election, unless there was a primary challenge.
Okay.
I think that that is, if I can interject, I, I think that's for putting it on for August, because historically, hasn't November deadline always been early August?
August 2nd.
Yeah.
August 2nd is the primary.
But it said for the, I'm just going by what Brian told me.
This is why I'm asking for staff to come back to us with the, the dates, the deadlines, so we can have an understanding of when we need to, to address this.
Actually, that might be, instead of trying to, on the cuff, figure this out, maybe we could have that discussion, the staff could take a look at the timelines, et cetera, and the presentations, and maybe come back with a succession of when this should be on our next meeting. Would that work?
I'll just let Brian respond, and then yes, it would, it would work.
Okay.
Just quickly, last day to, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. Last day to file a resolution for the November general election is Tuesday, August 2nd. And the, the last day to file a resolution for the August primary is Friday, May 13th. So, if you look at council calendar, we'd actually talked about this with respect to EMS, our very last day would have been the last council meeting in July for this council to affirm its support for EMS. Obviously, we're coming back on May 2nd with that resolution, but that, that's the parameters you're working under.
Would everyone be comfortable then with the staff coming back with a recommendation of the date that we could revisit this after they've had an opportunity to figure out when they're going to present the Metropolitan Park District information?
I, I think I would make a commitment to do it at our next meeting, so that there'd be a, a chance we had to have a discussion. Because at least for, with the discussion I've heard here, there doesn't seem to be much enthusiasm for doing something different. So, before you decide to do the Greenways, I'd like the council to have some specifics about it, about the, doing it a different way. So, we can do that, Pinky. It's not a, it's not, it really isn't that complicated.
Okay. Councilmember Lilaquist, you've been waiting for a moment.
Well, sure. First, I just say, thank you, Kelly. I do think it needs to come back sooner, so that we're not rushed or compressed later on. And we, you know, come in not every week. So, I think May 2nd is entirely appropriate, so we don't feel rushed. But I, I guess I kind of am surprised that there's, that this, either we do this or do that. It's not an either-or decision. There is simply no way that a $7 million Parks District can fund a $15 million Parks program. The MPD cannot replace our Parks program and Greenways. It's not an either-or. So, I already know as a matter of fact that if we're going to keep a Greenways program going, we can't do it with an MPD by itself. Greenways will be part of the picture. It's just dollars and cents. So, I, I'd like us to keep moving forward steadily on the Greenways proposal, you know, as Terry is suggesting, we need to be ready. And also, on the Parks District discussion, because it really could be one of the most important tools for the long term, but it, it's not a solution for Parks and Greenways. It's, it's just not big enough. It never will be.
Councilmember Parker.
So, I, I certainly can see, I think it's called like a nesting of, of measures that come out, or taxations. I am a little confused. I don't mind waiting till May, but I, I looked really specifically at the retreat information, and I did have some specific questions to this, for the retreat, but when I saw that, it would take greater than two years to figure out a Metropolitan Parks District in the little section. I, I just didn't ask the questions, because I felt confident that if we were going to go there, it was going to be a, it was going to be a conversation, that we were going to be able to bring people into the fold. My apprehension about, and I will wait till our very first meeting in May to make a decision. I have two apprehensions. One, I am extremely thankful to Citizens Group, having been part of them, to get this far, and, and, and to be patient with us while we're figuring some things out. But, yeah, I, I don't want to lose any trust or understanding within so many of those supporters to feel like we might be trying to pick a better thing than, than that. The other is, is, is the citizens and, and time. And, and I think these things take time to develop. And I would really worry that at this point, we're looking at learning about a brand-new district, brand-new thing, how it relates in May, and then by August, we have to get our brains around it, and then start a campaign with the city and all of us to be on the same page, and make sure we sister that with our Greenways families, so that there's no animosity. And to me, it just, it feels so rushed, and I don't want to lose any trust in the public to feel like we're, we're going at it so quickly. And it, I think to use Rick's, it's, it doesn't feel right. It just does not feel right to pick for me. However, maybe you can change my mind in May. I'll, I'm happy to give that opportunity, as I do with any constituent. So, those are my, my, my feelings.
Okay, so, right now, we are saying that we will have a presentation on the Metropolitan Parks District on May 2nd, and let's say that we revisit the Greenways discussion on the May 16th meeting. Does that sound...
Sounds good.
Fine for everyone?
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth, again, for your time and consideration. So, I know this was supposed to be 15 minutes, and it was almost an hour. So...
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Seth. Appreciate your time. We have one set of minutes in front of us today to approve. This is the committee minutes for April 11th, 2016.
Move approval.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Older New Business. Just to let everyone know, we did have a, the city council did have a retreat on Saturday at Woodstock Farms, and I'm going to do a complete report out of the retreat in this evening session. Does anyone else have anything for Older New Business? Councilmember Bornham.
Yeah. This morning, after our committee meeting, I went for a, a walk. It's the first time I've been able to do it, a loop around Maritime Heritage Park from, from out here. And I have to say, I was really disappointed. It's been a long time since I've walked that area, and this is an area that should be a gem in our parks, because, because of the, of Watcom Creek and the waterfalls and things. But you walk along the boardwalk, and here's basically semi-permanent camp set up, you know, for, where people are, on one of the outlooks over the creek, there's tarps over it for shelter kind of things. There's, on the other side of the creek, there's tents. And we pushed, we want people in that park, families, kids, and other things. And if we're not going to keep those, you know, semi-permanent camps out of there, you're not going to, and we're not going to get families using that. And those are, I mean, that's such a beautiful area, and when that happens, you also look around, then you see all the trash all over, along by the park and stuff. And I know this goes to our level of service, but when we see, and I know the bicycle police go through there, and there are tarps over these things and other things, I mean, it's not responsible to allow those to remain, because then it just attracts more of, of those kind of things. And I know some people are in tough straits in terms of where they stay, but the park is not the place. And so, I just want to say, I was, you know, I was a little disappointed.
Can I bring you up to speed? Because I've got some speed to bring you up to.
Okay, because, yeah.
We started out on the camps cleanups very aggressively, and the idea was, we would go to the camps, we had the hot team. What we'd do is we'd say, "In five days, we're going to come, we're going to clean this camp up." And then, for five days, the hot team could look at placing people someplace else, because the idea of just a revolving camp down the riparian area wasn't, didn't seem to meet the goals we had. There were a lot of people from parks, from Public Works and Police, cleaning up an average of, I think they said, of 15 parks a day, because we have 125 sites that are available right now. Some are occupied, some aren't occupied. And so, I had a big meeting with representatives of the employees that were doing it, and I was told quite bluntly, "We don't have any place for anybody." So, that's when I started pushing my, my permanent transitional shelters, so there was a place for people to get their sleeping bags and their blankets and their, their, and it'll be low barrier, so they, it's not like the Lighthouse Mission with the restrictions that they have. And Rick Sepler is doing a very good job of working in planning and economic development to identify some projects that I was going to talk to you about at my mayor's meeting, but since you brought it up, I mean, my mayor's report. So, we met again last week, and what we've done is, we have identified one person from each of those departments I, I forementioned. We are going to continue to clean up the camps. We can't guarantee that there won't be anybody, because we don't have any place for people to go. So, just so everybody realizes that, once we have a place for people to go, either permanent beds, transitional beds, or shelter beds, it will be much easier to meet the public's concern. But we will be cleaning up the camps. And I'd be happy to do a little bit more in detail presentation tonight at my mayor's report. But we heard loud and clearly that the, the concerns about the camps were overriding the concerns about where people were going to be. And I, I said, "Fine. Then we're going to figure out some compromise that will deal with both the camps and the cleanups, and the hygiene, and the environmental degradation, and continue to approach the, the faith-based community, the shelters that we're, that we're working on." And so, this has been an ongoing effort, Terry, and I understand your frustration. It's my frustration, too. For three years, I sat and watched people across from City Hall and next to City Hall and on City Hall property, and there was nothing I could do. So, I'd walk in the, my office every day and, you know, kind of go off a bit, because if, if I'm the mayor and I can't help somebody, or my staff, it's frustrating for everyone. So, we're trying to, to balance the consideration of the people and finding a more important place, a, a more appropriate place for them to be, the enormous consideration of public health and safety for the community members, and then also for the employees that are assigned to, to cleaning these up. And we're looking at alternatives for who can clean camps up, and trying to expand our base, so we don't have, you know, people from the police department maybe doing it. Maybe they're doing other policing work that they should be doing. So, with that, I'll give a, a few more details tonight, but I certainly want to acknowledge and understand everyone's frustration from every point of view, because I share it.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else for...
Yes, I just want to revisit what I brought up, the retreat, and I'll be making a motion. It's about the 15-minute public comment period, one nights that we have public hearings in the future, that we put the 15-minute public comment period under the public hearing notices. That way, it gives everybody a level playing field. People don't get mad, because when they sign up, they think they're going to speak right off the bat, and they don't. This way, and I've heard some from people who do, we have heard some other contrary emails, but a lot of people think that'd be a good idea, because they'll know when they could come. They could come later in the night if they're able. That way, it'll all work. So, I make a motion that we move the 15-minute public comment period underneath any public hearings on our agenda.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Lilaquist.
Gene, I understand why you're suggesting this, is because you don't want the people who are there for a scheduled hearing to have to wait far too long for the hearing to, to begin at the scheduled time. But what about what we currently have, which is that we adhere to the 15 minutes? If, if there's more speakers, the, the president has cut off the comment, and it resumes after the hearings are done. So, the hearings still begin more or less on time.
Yeah, but wait a minute. There's times when the council president has to totally not do it at all and do the public hearings, whether it's me or anybody else. If there's two or three public hearings, we divert that until after the hearing's over. We don't even have a 15-minute public comment period. That's why I'm bringing this up, because it sends a different message when, when that happens. I mean, the chair can always go 15 minutes, but if you have, you know, a night where there's three public hearings or two public hearings, that, that even makes it harder. But to go back to 1992, when this was instituted, I wasn't on the council, but I was out in the crowd, 15-minute public comment periods were people to come and talk to the council about city issues. Well, now we have, that's expanded a little bit. There's more than city issues that come forward, and people have a right to come and do that. That's what we've opened ourselves up to. But I can tell you, sitting there and sitting here, there's people, when the council president says, "We're going to divert public comment, we're going to go to our public hearings" first, people who've come and signed up are automatically mad that they're not going to be able to speak right off the bat. So, I mean, it is give and take. It's probably going to make some people mad, might make some people happier, but I'm just trying to suggest so it isn't hard on the council president, because it, it can be pretty uncomfortable.
Councilmember Bornham.
The reason I support it is, the main purpose of this business, of, of these meetings is to do the business of, of the, of the council, and, and that is attend to these hearings and others. The, the public comment is something that we're open to listen and take, take those comments, but that's not the main duty of, of the meetings that we're having. It's to attend to those issues that are before us. And, and people have gotten used to that at the first, but it doesn't have to be that way. And I do think, you know, there, it's no more of an inconvenience for somebody with public comment to sit and listen to the, the hearing that they're doing and then speak than it is for the other way. And, and we have these public hearings and presentations that we do need to attend to. The other is, is, is we, you know, we, we want to listen. But the other, we have to attend to the, the business of, of running a city. And so, that's why I will support it.
We have a motion in front of us to move the public comment, the 15-minute public comment period to after public hearings on evenings when we are conducting public hearings.
Or presentations, I should put that. Sometimes a presentation can be...
That is true, yeah. Just like last week.
Yes.
Or presentations. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries six one. Councilmember Parker.
So, I sat down with the president of the Birchwood Neighborhood and WTA representatives Chuck and Rick, and discussed some of the issues that are coming up that, that part of our city is going to be facing with the closure of Albertson's, which is definitely happening May 7th. I don't have it in writing, but there have been people talking with Albertson's corporate, and there is no intention of opening or converting. And at this point, if they were to lease, it would be a no, no compete. So, that would mean no grocery store going there. I, I, I think we have to figure out, or I guess the mayor has to figure out at some point, what we're going to do for this community that we've put all this density around, and they're, they're going to meet the, the definition of a food desert, and that's very concerning. However, I was really impressed with Chuck and Rick, and of course, the new president of the Birchwood Neighborhood Association. And, and the, the point of that meeting was, how do we work with WTA on wayfinding? So, people who will be pretty shocked or new or needing to ride the bus will know how they can get to a store the soonest. And so, WTA is working on how that, what would that look like? And then also, the public school district jumped in really quickly and said that they would be willing to work as well to get the information out, and then any other resources that are available for families who, this could really impact not having access to fresh fruits and vegetables, which we know, again, the most burdened will, will suffer this the hardest, and usually that means health impacts, which can mean more cost to cities and, and people, and just hurt families. So, I'm hoping to have something sooner than later from WTA that we could at least let people know what that's going to look like. And I'm just really thankful to them, because, I mean, they just jumped to it as soon as the request was there, and the neighborhood's really working with it, and again, the school district. So, thank you to all the people partnering.
Councilmember Bornham.
Yeah, it might be good, too, to figure out a way to direct the citizens of Birchwood Neighborhood to non-Albertson-owned stores to do their grocery shopping, and to make it clear that you're going to, that you're going to do that, since they're putting up a non, you know, they won't allow anything in that area, you know, just...
Let me be clear, because, and I wanted, yeah, be clear that, that we don't have anything that's writing, I don't have it in my hot little hands, which I would love. And, and, you know, maybe, maybe there could be some discussions on what that will look like, but, but for right now, I'm really thankful for WTA and the school district for working with it. And just a reminder, if you know any families that are living over there, this is happening. There will be no access, so.
Anyone else for Older New Business? Okay, so, we have, we're going to convene to executive session, which is closed to the public, and there'll be a report out in the regular meeting tonight. We have two items for executive session, a potential property acquisition and a potential litigation. Executive session is expected to last approximately 20 minutes, 25 minutes, I'm sorry. And I will be back here to extend or adjourn... And I will be back here to extend or adjourn by 3:20. Thank you.